I call this meeting to order. My name is Chad Nelson. I'm the vice chair. And today is August 17, 2022. And would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May we please have the roll call?
Jim Harris. Chad Nelson.
Here.
Matthew Mitchell.
Here.
Gabriel Medley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Joan De Zero.
Here.
Dane Hatch.
Here.
Paul Laird.
Here.
And Tiffany Wilson.
Okay, and can we have Ms. Wilson join us today? Okay, correspondence and announcements.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair. We have an honor today. Mr. Don Bergen, owner of our retired Planning and Zoning Commission members, is going to be a recipient of award for service presented by the mayor. So if you don't mind, Mayor Kalshihi, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Thank you for having me. We have the honor today of honoring one of our longtime serving Planning and Zoning Commission members, Mr. Don Bergen. Mr. Bergen, if you could please join me by the podium. Thank you for your service. Mr. Bergen started with the Planning and Zoning Commission as an alternate in 1990. He then served five years, or five terms, as a regular member for a total of 19 years of service to Lake Havasu City. Don and his wife, Chris, are longtime volunteers on Lake Havasu City, and they do really amazing work. And we were so honored to have your expertise, your knowledge, and your steadfast commitment to our zoning codes and planning within our community, and we are so grateful for your service. We have this plaque to honor your dedication, and it says, "With our greatest appreciation, we hereby honor Donald Bergen for your years of dedicated service to Lake Havasu City as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner. We thank you. August 17, 2022." Congratulations. And if I could, Mr. Bergen, if you could stay, and if I could have members of the commission join me on the front of the dais, we'll take a photo. And Chris, if you'd like to join us as well, we'll go up frontier and take a photo. And staff members as well, please, join us over here.
Okay, thank you, Don. Meeting, or minutes of the previous meeting, is there any additions or deletions to the previous meeting's minutes? Say that five times.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Ms. Ballard made a motion to approve.
Ms. Ballard, can you repeat that into the microphone, please?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by, I'm sorry, I can't. Does it, does zero?
Joan De Zero.
De Zero, okay. Wait a second, by Ms. De Zero.
Motion passes. Seven to zero.
Sorry. Okay, this is a public hearing. The structure of this meeting will allow the staff to present an item. The commission may ask staff questions, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to present. Commissioners may have the, may have questions for the applicant, and then I will open the discussion to the audience. We ask that if you would like to address the commission, please do so. But there's a time limit of one, there's a limit of one trip to the podium, and please keep the time to three minutes to speak. I will then close the discussion and bring the item back to staff and ask for their recommendation. The commission will then hear a motion discussed and make a recommendation to the city council for their final consideration. Our first item is ID 22-3410, a request for a preliminary subdivision plat for Tesoro Townhouses at 1080 Akoma Place. And I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The subject property is located at the end of Akoma Place and Alley 45. The properties to the north are zoned commercial Southgate District and developed commercial uses and vacant lots. The property to the west and south are zoned residential Southgate District and developed for residential uses. The property to the east is zoned mixed-use neighborhood district across the wash and developed as a senior living home. The project includes 13 one-bedroom residential units with 13 covered parking spaces and three uncovered parking spaces. 11 secondary garage units accessed from the alley. Parcel A and easement for ingress egress, maintenance and operation of utilities, sewage, drainage, refuse collection, emergency, and emergency vehicles. Parcel B is a common pool area. The project will have a property owners association to manage and maintain the association improvements. Parcel A and B will be privately owned, and the water and wastewater within the subdivision will be installed and maintained by the association. This concludes staff's presentations. We are available for any questions. I believe the applicant is also available today.
Is there any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have a question. So these are all one-bedroom units, you said?
Yes, that is correct.
And the parking requirements for each one-bedroom unit is what again?
It's 13 covered parking spaces and then three undercover parking spaces.
So how many, how many parking spaces per unit?
One per unit.
One per unit. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. You stated there was 13 covered parking spaces. I only count 11.
There's 16 total. And then, yeah, three will be covered, and three will be uncovered.
But you said the, the ones across the back.
Oh, those are garages, and they're separate from the parking requirement.
Okay, so there's 11 garages, but there's 13 units. Is that correct?
Well, so this, these garages are going to be separate from the parking requirement. So the required parking is just in this area in Parcel A. And the developer said 13 of those will be covered, or carports, and then three uncovered.
Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? If the applicant is present, and you'd like to make a presentation, please come up, state your name, and spell your last name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lee Johnson with APL Surveying. I'm here to answer any questions you guys might have on this project.
I have a question, Lee. So the, obviously, the parking meets the parking requirements, and the, the garages are, do you not necessarily have to be an owner in the development to buy one of those garages, or to own one of the garages?
No, I believe the way that the developer has set this up is that the garage units will have to be owned by an owner of one of the units.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there anybody else from the audience that would like to speak on the matter? Go ahead and go to the podium. Please spell your last name and state your last name for the record.
My name's Emiliano Torres. E-M-I-L-I-A-N-O, Torres, T-O-R-E-S. And I was going to reserve this question to, for the public portion of the meeting, but since it was brought up, what formula is planning using for parking in just about any one of these communities? Is the formula being used a generic formula that's probably statewide, or is it unique to Lake Havasu City?
That'd be a question of staff.
And the reason I'm asking this is because this town is unique in that we sure do have a lot of trucks with boats behind them that require two spots. And with more and more people using these, these homes as Airbnbs or for winter rentals, I know my son is planning on buying one of these, and he's going to use the garage to store his toys, and yet ran out the residents. And in addition, I know there's HOAs that can limit this, but HOAs aren't permanent. What you do is going to be permanent. So again, I'm just, the question is, what formula are you using to make sure there's adequate parking and not just filling the city streets? Thank you very much.
Well, we'll reserve that, that question for staff. But planning, the commission doesn't review HOA or CCNR, so whether that's a condition of the homeowners association where they do or don't allow rentals, or what the CCNRs entail, in this commission, we don't review those. But if staff could answer the question.
Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, thank you. The parking standards for this property meet the Development Code, and some zoning districts, the parking standards vary. In this particular zoning district, every one-bedroom or fewer unit needs one covered parking space. If it's more than two bedrooms per unit, then it needs one and a half covered parking spaces per, one and a half spaces per unit, at least one covered. This one meets all the requirements. There are some areas making, in the downtown area, that only require one parking space. This requires one parking space per one bedroom. So this is fairly common zoning district, I mean, parking requirement in the residential areas in town. And there's the question about state standards or anything like that. The standards for parking are left up to the local jurisdiction, what they feel is the most adequate or appropriate for their parking needs. So one-bedroom unit here requires one covered parking space, and then one guest parking space for every five units. So this does meet the standards, and it's a pretty citywide standard. Thank you.
Hopefully, that makes sense to you. Okay, seeing that there's no other comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring back the item for staff recommendations.
Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends approval of land use action 22-3410, a preliminary subdivision plat for Tesoro Townhouses at 1080 Akoma Place, tract 2287, block 3, lot 2B, creating a 13-unit residential townhouse and 11-unit garage subdivision in the residential Southgate District.
Thank you. And we'll bring it back to the commission for any more discussion and/or a motion.
Just one, just one comment. I'd like to, you know, we, we do, get the gentleman's comment about parking, you know, that's one of, one of the things I bring up all the time also. And, but we do have an inventory problem of housing also. That's, any housing development is going to really help the inventory that we need in the city. But we're unique because we don't have street parking in most cases. We do not have street parking. So, and you can't tell people, hey, don't invite your family. They're going to fight their family even in a one-bedroom. And it's almost like first come, first served on parking, you know? So it's just a unique situation that I don't know if that's anything we could legislate at the city council level or governmental level at all. But the inventory of the housing does help us out. I just wanted to make that comment.
And my opinion on this development is there's adequate parking. They have the garages plus the parking. You know, what the neighbors do to get along, I mean, that's up to them. But we, we can't control that. If someone wants to buy the unit just for the garage and rent the unit out and expect more parking, that's, they're going to have to deal with their neighbors. But I, I think this one has plenty of adequate parking plus the garages. So can I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 22-3410.
Hey, we have a motion by Mr. Diaz. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Mrs. De Zero. Is that how we read it? Or by Ms. Medley?
No, it's the verbal that counts. But if you could please push the motion button. I've corrected it.
She was like one second faster than you were.
I've corrected it to be Ms. De Zero as a second.
Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion passes 6 to 1.
Okay, and we are on to ID 22-3411, a request for a planned development rezone for 2031 Industrial Boulevard, tract 115, block 9, lot 1A, from general commercial C2 to general commercial planned development, C2 PD, to allow storage units. And if we could turn that over for staff for their presentation, please.
Mr. Chair, thank you much. The subject property measures about 3.34 acres, about a third of acre. It's currently used for open lot storage. It's located at the northeast corner of Industrial Boulevard and Bahama Avenue. There's a wash directly to the north of the property. The lots to the north across the wash and to the east are zoned C2 general commercial and developed with commercial uses. The property to the west across Bahama Avenue is zoned light industrial and also developed as a commercial use. The properties to the south across Industrial Boulevard are zoned multiple family and limited multiple family and developed with single-family uses. A little bit of background on this item. In November of last year, the city council amended the permitted uses table to eliminate storage units as allowed uses in the C2 zoning district. The council expressed concerns regarding prime commercial properties being used for storage unit developments, and stated publicly that the north and south entrances of the city should be protected. However, it was also mentioned that an applicant could still request a storage unit use through the planned development rezone process. Therefore, the applicant makes this request to rezone the property to allow storage units for RVs, boats, and similar items. Here's the site plan. It's a conceptual plan. It shows two 24-foot wide driveways accessing the property, one from each of the streets. There's an ADA and two parking space standard or spaces. They meet the development standards. There are two buildings proposed, 18-foot tall, with a total of 10 storage units. Building A, which is the larger one, is 42 by 91 and have seven, has seven units. And then the smaller building B is 39 by 39 and has three units. The buildings meet the building setbacks, except for the northern portion of building B. It appears to encroach about, a little bit into the 10-foot landscape buffer. The building exteriors facing the streets are shown as stucco finished, with the other exteriors as steel siding or roll-up doors. The building color has not been indicated. The proposed landscaping shows a more than adequate number of trees, shrubs, and decorative ground cover, but some of the landscaping plants need to be relocated out of the city's right-of-way and into the 10-foot landscape buffer area. The size and type of the required trees are not shown on the landscaping calculations. As a note, any landscaping of buildings sackback deficiencies, along with any noncompliant issues, will be addressed through the permitting process when this goes forward for permitting, for building permits. A little bit of summary. The city council, again, suggested that storage units may be allowed in some C2 zoning districts through the PD process if the proposed development fits into the neighborhood. The subject property is not located near a gateway into the city. It's in an area that has several existing commercial and light industrial uses with light industrial zoning across Bahama Avenue and commercial uses to the west and to the north. Storage units do not have a large traffic impact and are typically not noisy uses. The location lent itself well to the proposed small-scale storage unit development. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions. The applicant is also here. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke. Is there any questions of staff on this item?
Mr. Chairman, I guess the question is, what's the history of the, the existing open storage there? Is that kind of a grandfathered thing from a passcode, or?
That has, was allowed through a minor conditional use permit. It was a short-term thing for a couple of years, and that term has run out. So now they're moving forward with their original plan to do storage units. Now, because of the timeframe, they have to go through this planned development process. When they started it, it was allowed to have storage units on the property. They would do open storage for just a limited time, a couple of years, and then do storage units. So now they're going through that storage unit planned development rezone. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing that no other questions, is the applicant present, and would you like to make a presentation? And please state your, your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Rob Sampson with Stellberg Associates. My last name is S.A.M.P.S.O.N. Luke did such a phenomenal job on presenting this. Pretty much every talking point I had was covered. So I don't really have much else to say, other than we'll take those trees out of the city right-of-way.
I had one question for you. In the stormwater retention area, and I apologize if I don't know this, but is there going to be fencing around that? Is that required?
It depends on the depth. So that's still a preliminary plan, but we'll have our civil engineer look at that.
Okay. Is there, what's the, what's the code? Or it depends on the depth if a fence is required?
Yeah, I'm not an expert in that regard, but after a certain depth, then a boundary fence, a fence, or safety fence is required around the, the water retention. And that would be something that we reviewed during design review during the permitting process.
Is that something that we can require here, or no?
Well, I, I think you could do that as a specific. I, hopefully, the, the motion is, well, the suggested motion is to go through design review and meet all the building and development code requirements. So that would be a requirement there. You, you could do that if you wanted to. It may be a little too specific at this point, but in staff's estimation, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question. On the units that are closest to Industrial Boulevard, what is the, what is the size of the apron between the parking and the building?
We have a 10-foot buffer off of the property line, and then it's just what's left to get to the right-of-way, which I want to say is 25 feet total.
So the parking, you have parking designated in the striped area, is that correct?
That, the, yeah, striped area is actually no parking area.
Okay.
And then you have the accessible parking space, and then up from that, you'll see that it's the regular parking spaces.
So the length or the distance between that marked parking space and the front of the first three units is how many feet?
It's in excess of what the city's minimum requirement is of 24 feet.
Is 24 feet sufficient for someone to pull in that driveway and make a turn into those first three units?
Potentially. I mean, here's the, the, history has taught us doing storage units that they don't get a lot of car traffic coming in. So it's typically a very short-term use for that parking. So we're just essentially gambling a little bit that we're not going to have much parking there, and they'll get the full use of the 45 to 50 feet of that driveway.
Is the average use of an apron in these types of storage units 60 feet?
That's a loaded question. Typically, we're five feet beyond what the depth of the unit is. So if the unit's only 35 feet, it'd be 40.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Sampson. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to stand up and ask any questions about this item? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the staff for a recommendation.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for land use action 22-3411 for a planned development rezone for 2031 Industrial Boulevard, tract 115, block 9, lot 1A, from general commercial C2 to general commercial planned development, that's C2 PD, to allow storage units as shown on the attached development plan with the following condition. Building permits and design review for compliance with the Development Code will be required prior to development of the property. And again, as a reminder, this item is scheduled to be heard by the city council at September 22 meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Bring it back to the commission for any discussion and/or a motion.
Mr. Chair?
I just, in looking at this, I know that the, we don't want the storage units on either, on 95 basically anymore, because it gives, I've heard a lot of discussion about how that is detracting from when you come into town. But I do know that when we're looking at like what we just did with the townhouses, there's not a lot of places for these people to put their toys. And I do think that storage units like this, in an area like this, is probably a good idea. One of the reasons I think it's a, a good plan is that it's in an area that's already light industrial. It's off the, the 95 away from, from that area. But it gives people a chance, who are buying these one-bedrooms or two-bedroom places, to have a place to put their ATVs or whatever toys they might have on that.
Thank you, Ms. De Zero. Any other comments or discussion or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve. I move to recommend the city council approve land use action number 22-3411 for a planned development rezone for 2031 Industrial Boulevard, tract 115, block 9, lot 1A, from general commercial C2 to general commercial planned development, C2 PD, to allow storage units as shown on the attached development plan with the following condition. Building permits and design review for compliance with the Development Code will be required prior to development of the property.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Let's call for the question.
Motion passes 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. At this portion of the meeting, we will do the call to the public. If there's anybody from the public that would like to stand before us and make a presentation, please do so. We cannot respond, but you're welcome to make a presentation. Please come to the podium. And state your name again for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Emiliano Torres. I live up in the Foothills area, and this is just a general question. In that last month or so, we had a community is just a general question, in that last month or so, we had a community meeting presented by a developer who's planning on doing something up there, and then I'm under the understanding that there'll be another developer conducting a different meeting sometime in September. Now, the question I have is, is there some legal requirement for these meetings, is this just a developer giving us a presentation, just to get the feedback from the community? Does the planning department, or do you use the results of these community meetings in your decision? One of the things that keeps getting passed around in my neighborhood is, oh, we didn't get notified by the 300-foot requirement, so my question, again, back to it being a legal requirement, is there a legal requirement for 300 feet? Like I said, there's some, lots of words, rumors floating around, thank you very much.
And we can't, we can't answer the question, but you can see staff.
Feel free, I'll, I can, feel free to speak with you after the meeting if you don't mind.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, future meetings.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioners, thank you, at this point, we have, we do have at least one item for the September 7 meeting, so September 7, we will have a meeting, thank you.
Okay, thank you, and it looks like we stand adjourned.